Time being seven thirty, I'll call this meeting to order of the planning board. This is May the first. We're going to, this will be recorded which you will be able to get it either on the West Bridgewater Cable Network or you can go onto YouTube to get it if anybody isn't here. This, we're going to be discussing zoning amendments that are going to be taken up at the annual town meeting, which will be this Monday at six o'clock at the high school gymnasium will be where the town meeting will be. So anybody that is interested, by all means, go, it's democracy in its purest form. That being said, I'll introduce the board. We have Tony Kennerhan, James Noys, Jerry Stetson, Town Planner, Tracy Aldrich, and our recording secretary, Joanna Carter. I'm Hugh Hurley, the chairman.
I'll start out by reading the public hearing that was posted in the Yonkers on April the fifteenth and the twenty-second. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty, Section five, that the West Bridgewater Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May first, two thousand twenty-four, at the West Bridgewater Town Hall at seven thirty P. M. to discuss six proposed zoning amendments to the West Bridgewater zoning bylaws that will be included as articles on the May sixth, two thousand twenty, the town meeting warrant, the proposed amendment of contractor's storage yards, of business, industrial, and town center district signs, a mixed use, that's a mixed use of residential and business, accessory dwelling units, permitting body for activity structures within the Water Resource Protection District, and single and two-family dwelling minimum lot sizes.
I will start out by, we'll go through the instances as they appear in the town warrant. The, that chapter in, of the Mass General Laws requires that the planning board holds a public hearing and that we make a report to the town meeting, whether we approve it or disapprove it and make recommendations. So we will be discussing the, the items and then making recommendations. The first zoning amendment will be Article thirty-seven. It's the contractor's storage yards. One of the things with this is in our bylaws, we had had that a contractor's storage yard could be a use in a general residence and farming district. It is required to be a special permit in any, any zone that it is in, but it was allowed previously in the residential, the business, and the industrial zones. It really is not a business or an industrial usage, and we therefore have, have changed it from a special permit to a, to a no, an absolute no. And we also redefined some of the things that can be done in, in, or clarify what can be done. One of the, the things is separation between a commercial contractor's yard usage and a residential where it calls for landscaping and our fences to separate both visually and acoustically from the, the neighbors. I'm not going to read through the whole bylaw. That, that one is fairly simple, but that's the gist of what it amounts to. I'm going to be taking because these have to be individual recommendations to the town meeting. I'm going to be taking individual votes. So I will entertain a motion to recommend to the annual town meeting, Article thirty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kennerhan.
No changes to any of the footage requirements, right? So it has to be in business or industrial?
Yes.
Final point?
Okay, so that's, that's, yes, I'm calling for your vote.
Aye.
Mr. Noys.
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye. The vote is unanimous of the four present. We have, we are a five-member board, but our, one of our members has, has some, counted some health problems, and right now he's not able to come in, but we expect him to return in the, in the very near future. But for this, we only have the four members, and we only need three for, to have a legal vote, so we, okay. The next one is going to be Article number thirty-eight. And this is to see if the vote will amend the bylaw, Section four point four, Table of Use Regulations regarding signs, and we're going to be changing it so that these are for digital message boards, which you can see them everywhere now. In fact, the town has a couple of them that they put out when they are making announcements. But one of the things they're changing is in the general residence and business district, they're changing that just to a, to a no, because it shouldn't be any businesses going along which would need them anyways. And then it, it's some, so the change, basic change is to change it so that it's not allowed in the general residence and farming district. Any further discussion?
I'm confused. The town center? This is to amend so they can be, the town hall can put a sign out front, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, you know, something.
No, it's allowed right now by special permit.
I thought it wanted, the discussion at the selectments meeting was that it wasn't allowed in the town center. Is this a change for?
Hey, well, I'm, I got it changing.
Mr. Chairman, so the, originally, the proposal was to make it a no in general residential farming and town center. The town center edit has been removed, so the town center will be staying as it was before any amendments, and the only change to the table of uses would be to make it not.
I thought it was, it never was, the problem is, it was never thought of to be in the town center.
Yeah, but it, here's, here's the old book, it is in there.
Okay. That's my only question I got is, at the selectments meeting, when they were discussing this, was they got a article at town meeting to put a digital sign that announces things out front, but they didn't, it wasn't allowed according to their meeting, so.
If it was the edit, wouldn't have allowed it.
Actually, they, they changed a little bit of wording in it, too. In fact, do you ever read line?
No, I have just the book.
I have, in fact, I went, I went to the, to the website and got the official one that was submitted to the town clerk. Once it goes to the town clerk, then it's, this is official. And then actually, they, they showed big, big letters rather than just, they changed the.
There's just been a font thing on it?
Yeah, they changed the font thing. But, but in here, actually, there is, there is a little bit, in, in six point five point two, it currently says business, industrial, district signs, and they added, because it was in the graph, but it, for town center, but it wasn't in the, in the dialogue, now it says business, comma, industrial, and town center, and then it goes on to say, are permitted in the business, comma, industrial, and town center. So not only is it in the, in the chart, but it was actually spelled out. So it's a clarification.
Okay, I'm gonna throw a monkey wrench in here. What is the dump district considered?
Considered the transfer station.
The transfer station. Is that residential farming? If so, they got a sign down there that's illegal or going to be illegal.
What about, were you?
It's not a business district, it's not an industrial.
Yeah.
Well, they never had permission for it anyways.
Oh.
That one just all of a sudden showed up. And that's, I'm just.
I know. But, but, yeah.
Is that residential farming down there?
Yeah, it is, of course it is, yeah.
So if somebody came in and says, well, if you can allow it at the transfer station, why can't I do it at my house? If you let us dump leaves in your front yard, you can. I'm just throwing something out that's a question.
No, you, you have a, you have a very good, good, good point. Did, did, I wonder, did they ever get it? They did?
They have a special permit for the sign. It was probably, the sign specifically? Do they deal with the?
There are no uses in here, though, just a sign type part. I would assume if we had a sign on the, on the town hall property, it would be town business only.
Oh, okay, because when they moved the gates back, I think they moved the sign back, and the sign has specific hours that it's supposed to be on.
So they do have a special permit?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
No, you, and, and, you know, it's.
I mean, with the lack of newspapers, we've got to publicly be able to transmit some things, and I mean, the transfer station is probably the most visited place in town.
Oh, yeah, that's a great place.
And, I mean, out here at the town hall, because you got all the youth activities out there.
Yeah, but, but, no, but not everybody goes to the transfer station either. It's a, it's a lot of rubbish pickups around. There's a lot of those really bins that they, they put out front. Okay, so, we, did, did we have a motion?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion as accepted.
Okay.
Or presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Kennerhan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Noys?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
And Mr. Hurley votes aye. We have a unanimous vote of the four present. It's Article thirty-eight. Next one is Article thirty-nine. This is to amend the zoning, Section two, definitions and sections of four point four So what they're doing, okay, in, in the, the table of use regulations that appears in the zoning, they are changing, they are striking out, it currently reads, mixed residential commer- commercial, maximum of two-bedroom units, no residential on ground floors. They're striking that out, just putting in mixed use and, and changing it from, and in the, in the table, allowing mixed use in, which is not allowed, it's currently allowed with a special permit, it will, mixed use will continue not to be allowed in the general residence farming and the industrial. It currently isn't allowed use in the town center, and it will be a.
Why isn't the town center an SA? Says why?
Yeah, it's, it's an allowed use. That was part of when Larry Coff came and, and came up with that, that zoning thing. That was, that was.
So it's always been a yes?
In, in town.
For mixed use?
Yeah.
And we're just changing business to?
To allow it.
Allow it, okay.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved as presented. Do they still have to meet the requirements for a two-family?
Yeah, it, it, it goes on later on to further define the mixed use, and it's quite a bit to it.
Can I ask you a question? Does it?
Could you identify it someplace?
Oh, yes, Linda Simpson, one sixty Bryant Street, and this says, three-story, one to three-story structure. Does the mi- mixed use have to be within that structure?
We'll get to it on the next one when, when it spells it out.
Okay.
I think the definition is where, the definition above the chart is where it explains what mixed use is.
Oh, excuse me, all right. Yeah, okay. Okay, they go, okay, all right, thank you. We, they've added mixed use, and then there'll be a one to three-story structure intended for use by, by both the commercial entity located on the first floor and residential uni- units with a maximum of two bedrooms each located on the upper floors. The commercial and residential uses must adhere to all applicable regulations set forth in the town of West Bridgewater zoning bylaws. I, I.
So could you have a structure that you're using as an office on the first floor and residential on the second?
Yeah.
And also be a, maybe a contractor's yard? As long as that contractor's yard has got the office in the first floor?
Your contractor's yard is, is, in what district, a business?
In the business district.
Yeah, okay, now the contractor is, is a use by special permit.
Or grandfather.
Right, but could you have a mixed use in a contractor's yard?
Well, the, the contractor's yard could be the business.
That's what I'm saying, and then have apartments?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I would say so, because it is, it, it is a kind of, a contractor's yard is a business, I mean, it's got a, got a business.
And just to, to further on that, the contractor's yard could just be a contractor's storage yard alone without a, without building?
Correct.
If there was the office in the downstairs, in theory, if it was permitted in that district, then the way I'm interpreting is that yes, that could potentially have the.
Okay.
How many units would be allowable?
I think it's.
Two or? It says two bedrooms.
The maximum of.
Two, two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms per unit.
But it doesn't say how many units. But it does say that it has to conform to the, commercial and residential uses must adhere to all other applicable regulations, so what I would assume that you could have more than two units of two bedrooms?
In theory, like you're saying, it's, it becomes a duplex, and a duplex needs the square footage.
We don't allow apartment, or we do, or, I guess that's the question, how many, how can we, you know, somebody builds a hundred thousand square feet on the first floor and put upon a bunch of units on the second and third?
But the unit couldn't have more than two bedrooms?
That's it.
But the units couldn't have more than two bedrooms in each?
No, I know, but they could have two hundred units.
They could have what?
They could have two hundred units.
No, it's, it's limited to, to the two-story, you're saying like if they did like a huge?
Yeah, if you've got a hundred, you've got a fifty by a hundred building with a second floor, and what's, what's, what's the, an average unit is what? How, two hundred square feet?
It references the dwelling.
On the maximum?
It references the defined term of dwelling unit, which I think is limiting, but I can So a dwelling unit is defined as one or more rooms with cooking, living, sanitary, and sleeping facilities arranged for the use of one or more persons living together as a single housekeeping unit.
But I don't believe we have any zoning that says.
But there's, there's two other ones there, Tracy.
How many units could be in a building?
I'm sorry, Mr.?
I don't think we have any, any zoning regulation that says that if you've got a big enough building, I mean, is an example, I'll use, suppose that Monstrosity, I know it's a forty B that's being built next to, that first floor was a store, now they got twenty-something units above it, we could tell them, yeah, you can only have no more than two bedrooms, but you got, still got twenty-something units.
But you can only have a two-family town, you can't have a three or a four-family in the general residential farming.
Yeah, but this is in business.
Yeah, but this is going to be in a business.
Right, I don't know if it says that in the business.
Because Tracy, when you were reading the dwelling, that was only the first part of it, because it does define dwelling, single family, and dwelling, multi-family, multi-family house, apartment, or apartment house.
The same, a, a building in particular, I mean, it sounds like a convenience store on the first floor, and then we're apartment on the second floor.
Yeah, I think that's what it was intended to be, but I just don't know if somebody.
With somebody, like some of these houses that have been, they got offices on the first, you know, in, in there, they, they have a, up above, but yeah, if somebody comes in.
I mean, look at Boston, I mean, they've got storefronts on the first floor, and then they got twenty stories above that.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody might look at it and think the same way, that, that they could.
The only thing that limits it is the height of the building.
Right.
A hundred and ten gallons per night for each bedroom. I mean, we have a lot, or I won't say a lot, a good number of grandfather properties in town.
Which is, I believe the building inspector was the one brought this in, trying to have a way of, of regulating them and getting them, getting them to define, but as you read this, it says with a maximum of two bedrooms, plural, each. So they're not saying you can only have one unit, they're saying.
You can only have two bedrooms.
You can only have two bedrooms, each, meaning that, the implication there, each means plural, you'd have more than one.
Each floor.
Or it could be lengthwise, could be the, could be the second floor of a, a commercial building that's, like I said, fifty by a hundred, and they put a second floor in and have, have it divided up into X.
But so, so the way, so commercial entity located on the first floor, and residential dwelling units with a maximum of two bedrooms each located on the upper floor.
But we don't say how many eaches there are.
Let me go to the extreme, any one of these warehouses somewhere down the line, they decide they don't need that height, or?
Well, it's happening. The town of Milford passed, had a, changed their industrial bylaw to allow, basically doing what they've done to shoe factories for a hundred years, creating lofts, and because they, they got warehouse space that's empty. So they changed their industrial, a lot of the industrial buildings off of four ninety-five going through Milford are now being converted into living dwellings, because the, they're putting us, you know, a second floor, mezzanine, whatever you want to call it, and they're converting the whole thing into living quarters because the building's empty. And so many, depending on, these high-rise buildings that we got, that we're building in this town, these have got a lot of space they can do with all these new types of sophisticated lift equipment and stuff, but you get warehouses that are only like a two-story building, only twenty feet high, they've become, they're not usable anymore. And I know Milford, it's within, within the last two years, changed their industrial, because it was a big thing on, one of the news stations, it was, that's where I picked it up, and it's been talked of in other areas, in fact, I think Boston is talking the same thing, being able to convert industrial and commercial property into living quarters by building them within, similar to like you took the old shoe factories and they, you know.
Drachton did it with United Furniture Company, and Conner Center, and Martello.
Yeah, that just opened.
Now, across from the fire station, he, he has commercial use on the first floor and up on, on top, and I think he's got a couple of units there, I think he's got two units there.
I think the units are in the, what used to be the Bono bet.
No, but over the, the.
What's that?
The, the, the physical therapy.
I don't know if this, if this living quarter is there, but I know the other house does.
No, they, but I, I used, I was going there for therapy.
Yeah, I, I just.
And, 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 and Whitey's house does, and of course, he, the addition he built on it, he, he built an addition and put a house on, he's got offices on the ladder and put a, then built another, a whole house on, on top there. So I, I think, I think the point is well-taken, because, well, he's, he's got his house where he lives, when he's here, he's a Floridian pretty much.
Oh, yeah.
And over the, the old house, and over the, where the, your physical therapy is, so.
And they, and they had spent there for years.
Well, that, that was, that was the town center, that, the building's right on the edge of the street, that's that whole thing that, when they came in with that town center zoning, they sold us.
I got no problem, I mean, I, I'm, I, I believe, for nothing else, a property owner, it's, the way society is now, it gives you some living beings in your, that can look over your building if something's happening, it's a security type thing. I mean, nowadays, if you, unless you've got a million-dollar alarm system for your business, you've got somebody living upstairs and they hear a noise, they're gonna make, make a comm, it's just the way things are. I say, I have no problem, but other than the, the question of this.
I just see somebody bypassing the whole.
They go, oh, they.
You know, making it easy enough to, oh, yeah, I can put in a hundred residential units in the bus- business district just by putting a business on the first floor. I mean, they could even just have a storefront and nothing in there, and just be able to build a hundred units on whatever, five acres of land or what have you.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're all.
How about about twenty-four units on thirty-one thousand square feet?
You could do that.
But it's got those magic, it's got that magic forty B.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
But, but case in point, I mean, you know, what if they decide, you know? Instead, now they're coming in and they're gonna say, yeah, we're gonna put us, whatever, Honeydew Extension on the first floor and we're just building apartments above it. And they don't even have to go to, they wouldn't even go to the forty B route.
One, one of the other things with this, a one to, a one to three-story structure intended for use by both commercial entity, by both a commercial entity located on the first floor and residential. So intended, so this could be new, you know, cause I think kind of this was to take care of existing.
Doesn't sound like it was thought through.
It, it, yeah, but it, I believe that it was looked at to take, an existing entity that had, had space. Cause it's a couple of places around here that the building inspector, they were trying to legitimize them, but they, they're there. One that comes to mind, formerly did, but two years has passed since it has been used, so it kinda lost its, uh, its usefulness. But this, with that intended, a lot like Mr. Noe said, you, you build a, a building, say you put a, you, you put your real estate office on the first floor that you rented, the forty units on the, on the two upper floors. I wonder if taking this, uh, and put rather than structure intended for use, uh, an existing structure. Cause I think that was the intent, was to have it for, uh, in fact, one, one of, one of the ones that came to mind on this was a, 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 a building that used to have it and there was, and it was going to be a, a restaurant on the first floor and, and they kinda wanted to have, have a, like you say, a live-in, uh, watchman or caretaker or custodian, whatever you wanna, but.
I know a lot of places now, they, you know, the employees live, you know? But I mean, I can s-
But, but the, the, the thing is, I think with this, somebody can build, somebody can build it and, uh.
Yeah, cause it doesn't specify that it's existing. You've got the, you've got the.
Can it be amended to say no more than four units or residential units?
Well, I, I was, I was thinking of putting the amendment in for, only for existing buildings. So that somebody cannot build a new building and say, oh boy, I can put twenty-four units above me.
But it wouldn't, I don't think it would hurt anything to have a new building, but limiting the size of, you know, what they can have.
Yeah, but, uh, well, one of the things that, that does limit it in this town is, is the septic system. And, uh, and unfortunately, in, in the business zone, it's only an eighteen thousand square foot lots. And so if you go loading a, a, a small lot, that's, uh, that's just over half the size of our normal residential use. And you put a, a business on the, on the first floor, it's, it's limited as by the, by the Board of Health, which you're quite familiar with, I don't know how many units you can put in.
And also for parking and.
And parking, everything else.
So they'd be, there's restrictions, so they, they wouldn't be able to use a, a small lot, they'd have to have more. But what is now the state? They have a new, um, zoning, um.
That MBTA thing?
Yes, and that would allow for commercial on the bottom and residential on the top. Correct?
It's, it's, the requirement is to allow multifamily housing as a right. Doesn't necessarily have to have a commercial component, there's elements that certain towns could use to count towards that housing. I don't think our, we wouldn't qualify the way our, um, districts are set up now, but I won't go any further about that at this point, but.
She has been working, uh, doing an awful lot of work on it, she.
I know, that's why I, she knows.
I, I think she knows enough that she doesn't wanna stick her neck out into this one, too. So we, we, we have a legitimate concern here. Whether we put a restriction to just existing or we put a restriction to, to maximum numbers, but I don't. I don't believe that when, when they did the town center that they ever had that, they just kinda left that open. Probably figuring with the lots in the town center, which every single lot in the town center is relatively small.
There was a four-family house in the center of town at one time, right? The place.
Central Square.
The one I owned.
Yeah.
That, that still is a three, is a three apartment.
Yeah.
That was a if, a longer than I've been around.
Right.
Cause I, at one time, actually, when I owned it, wanted, was gonna co, thought about converting the downstairs into a business. You know, being able to rent it to a lawyer's office or something, accountant's office and then still keep the toilets. I never got into it, never, I never even looked into the law, but that, that was a lot recommended to me at one time when I was. But you got, caught, East Street, East Center Street, I thought they were gonna tear the building down, the Crowley property, but it looks like they're making it better.
Does that be a, a good example?
I mean, it's gonna be a contract, it's already been okay for contractors yet. So the guy could put somebody on the second floor.
Yeah.
And if you got help, you know, can't afford an apartment, so you give an apartment, it's part of their pay.
Like, like you say, just having, having somebody there, living there, you know, a physical body on the site.
You've got, you've got quite a few. I don't know.
Actually, I mean, I'm for it, but the, go back to the unintended consequences, if somebody's smart enough and gets a big parcel of land, I don't know, you know, there's enough still, you know, somebody who finds truth.
The thing is, is I don't think in a commercial property district, a business commercial, like you said, most of the lots, the only place you've got potentially, well, no, because that's been registered as a, is under farm trust, is the Vineyard Farms up here. And, and the golf courses taking, another parcel is taken off that.
We own that.
And then you taken, but I don't know of any major pieces of property.
No, but this, this would be, uh, throughout the business zone, but it.
Yeah, but your, your business owner's basically one oh six and twenty-eight.
Yeah, like you say.
And there's no real large parcels of property that are, that you could come in and.
I think, I was just gonna say, the, the, up where the
Grace Church is now, by Family Dollar, Dollar Tree, that's a big parcel and Lowe's is a big parcel.
Yeah, and that one has sewer. Yeah, you have sewer, that'd be an ideal place to do it.
Yeah, but the thing is, is I don't see somebody gonna, you'd have to tear down to build up on those pieces of property. Maybe Coates property up here on North Main Street has got some potential next to the, uh, restaurant.
That's relevant.
I mean, that's a good piece, but that's, that property is, but it's, but it's, yeah, but it's got the sewer runs right across the front of it.
I know it does, but.
And whether it's grandfathered to tie in or not.
We, we, we don't, we don't have a, an intermunicipal, uh, utility agreement.
That's for New Piper. This is one that's been in existence because Hardy's Restaurant is tied into the sewer.
No, but just to tie in, you can't, you gotta, you can't just tie in, you know, you gotta get permission from Brockton to tie in. I, I think if we, if we limited it to, in, in, existing, that way somebody isn't gonna build something. And, uh, and I don't think it's any, any buildings that are, um, that, that big that. Although, yes, somebody will take his pencil and sharpen it, and we see it with the forty Bs, they, they come in with unbelievable stuff that they can stuff in, in one of those, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, so I think you, you would be voting tonight on the article as written and then some, someone, I'm not saying the plaintiff, anybody could then move to amend it on the floor, but I think.
No, we can't, we can't, I agree with you, we can't do it. What I'm wondering though, is we have to make a report to the, to the, to it. Do we make, in our report, we, we make it, that we're in favor of it with the suggestion of a, an amendment? That's, that's, that's where I was gonna, and, uh, I, I, pretty much if we say an existing building, but then like the, uh, it used to be, uh, it was a dance hall, it was a gym, and it was a, uh, another dance studio just beyond, just before you get to Hardy's, that, uh,
Mm-hmm.
That, that building, that's a pretty good sized building. But it's, no way you could, you make a structure out of it, it's a, it's a metal building, you'd have to basically tear it down to build a.
Well, it's steel structure, you could, you find an engineer to design it, you put a, put an additional steel structure on top of it, but.
You got the Conway Building.
Yeah.
If anybody's gonna try.
I mean, you, you got the Glad Acres too, this.
Oh, yeah, in fact, that's already up there, you, all you, all you have to do is put petitions in.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a huge.
And now with Bob's Market Place.
Yep.
Which has floors that have never been used.
Yeah.
But I think both of them, um, Howard Farms has restrictions by the Board of Health. Because that's why they never could put a restaurant in there, because they couldn't put a, they couldn't get enough property to put in a larger enough system, I think, when it was originally done. Cause as you drove in with it, I think there's a.
Tore down the White House.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but they, they, you can also put in, uh, treatment plans, so that in an area.
Oh, yeah, and that stuff changes weekly.
And, and you can, you can do it, it's expensive, but it, you know, somebody weighs it, they, they could, they could come up with something. Yeah, you're right.
Cause I know at Howard Farms, I don't, I think only with a chiropractor's office on the, closest to the farm, that's the only second floor used in there, the rest on the other L, there's, I mean, this, the only thing that's lived in there is dust.
Yeah, it's there, but.
Yeah, the second, you could, just stairways and everything access to it.
And that's, that's a huge building, yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, it's a good point, that's, that's why we have it.
And the thing is, if you say existing, like particularly if you go west of South, of, of Elmer Square, somebody wants to put a second floor on those capes.
In fact, somebody, somebody did it and he never, he never did anything there. He paved the whole front lot and he, and he put a second floor, it was one of the small houses. It was just before you get to the restaurant, two houses, I think, two houses before the restaurant.
You could do that with almost any of those capes along there and put a second floor in a business, I mean, most of them got, they're either total residential now or they're commercial.
Up there at John Cummings' old house.
Which one's that?
Uh, on the corner of, we're Honeydewers, but on the other corner.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, Roddy Drummond built, built that, I think, yeah, I'd say.
But I don't know, is a resident.
I don't know.
I think somebody might be living over the garage, the taco, I don't know.
I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the white.
Okay, then that's on, that's on the, the West Street, yeah, she's talking about the high, the Crescent Street.
The Crescent Street corner.
It's a, it's a, it's a big one in there and there was a, the one on the corner of West Street. In fact, I forget how many units are, are in there, because that was something was a, maybe, uh, he was kicking around because apparently they, they just went in, there was, it was a, uh, he had a, uh, vending business and he built a little bit more and then he.
But the big, the main building though, where the coin shop is, that's all cathedral ceiling in there. That's not, that's not like a second floor, that's like wide open. There might be some small office space on the second floor, but, but most of it is, it's cathedral.
Yeah, but you can, you can do a lot of things inside. You gotta structure, so, yeah, I, I guess in, in, in existing building.
Saying there's more than what we're thinking of, you know, there's more structures that keep coming down.
And no matter what you make for a change, someone else, somebody's gonna find an angle. And so I, I would just.
I mean, it's a pretty nice.
As presented and then it will fend whatever comes down the road as it comes down the road.
Probably, yeah.
Because we, I, I'm sorry, but my crystal ball broke. And it's hard to, hard to tell what's gonna happen next minute, never mind.
Yeah. We, we, we have concerns, but.
We can, we can, we can correct everything with the amendment.
It's a good theory though to, to do it.
Yes.
I do, I do think that could be an unintended consequence though, not having some sort of cap.
Yeah.
But I could, don't know how you could put a cap.
Well, you can limit the number of units, but can you do that on the floor? Or is that changing?
We, we, we can make an amendment, we, we can, we can make an amendment to it.
Can we make the emotion, accept the article as written with the following amendment?
Oh, well, no, the.
And then have the amendment already ready to go?
We, we, we cannot, we cannot change this, this article, this article has to be voted on. But we can make amendment to it, in fact, the amendment has to be made first. So with it, you, you put this on and you, you get, have an amendment made. They discuss the amendment, they vote on the amendment, then it, when they vote on the amendment, then they go and vote, vote on the amended article.
Cause this is two-thirds vote.
Yep.
Because it's zoning.
Well, it's all two-thirds, so that's correct. But what do we, what do we wanna, what do we wanna amend it with? We, in my, my existing structure, we kicked it around and, and it got beat up pretty bad, I think. And, uh, but what do we, we put for, for, for a number, do we put a, uh?
The only thing is, if we accept it as presented and then lean on existing regulations by the Board of Health, parking and other things which will put limitations depending on the lot size.
Which is.
They're already, they're already in existence.
Yeah.
So you couldn't come in if you got a, like you said, an eighteen hun, eighteen thousand square foot lot. Well, if you can't put enough septic in for two, four, six units and for each unit, the parking requires what, one spot for every bedroom? Think it's something like that?
I forget now.
But I mean, on a dwelling, it's like once, you're supposed to have one spot for every driveway.
One, two, five or something.
Yeah, I mean, it's bedroom count that sets your driveway.
Yeah.
So I mean, you, you lean on the building inspector interpreting of the other regulations that would be associated with whatever somebody proposes.
And, and right in here, it says the commercial residential use must adhere to all applicable, all other applicable regulations set forth in which we brought us on by law.
So you're leaning on those other regulations, we're basically saying that they can, if they want, put a residential over a business.
Yeah, but he's gotta have adequate parking, he's gotta have adequate, uh, septic, uh, availability. He has to agree of the, the, the fire codes. And I, and I know that, uh, I believe that if it's. He has to read the the fire codes, and I know that, I believe, that if it's a residence or of like a restaurant, a kitchen and stuff, you gotta sprinkle a whole thing.
I don't know if it's gonna be that, but you've gotta have a second means of egress.
Yeah.
You can't, you know.
No, Mike said something about it, and I wasn't paying that much attention when he was talking about it.
The square footage, though, I mean, sprinkler is involved, there's a square footage issue.
Yeah, but it's 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 something, you may not be the sprinkler, but it's something if if the.
You'd have to, I know that even way back when I owned the place across the street, I've had to put in a hard wire. You can't get away with just battery operated smoke detectors and stuff. You have to put a hard wire system that's independent, that the electrical connection is independent of the residence meters, and there's regulations involved with that. But again, that's another regulation that's involved with it. Yes, you can put a dwelling in there, but you can't.
Okay, so is it consensus that we we vote on this in hoping that they can adhere to the other applicable regulations?
Picture the usual town meeting. There'll be five or six guys who will stand up and do exactly what we just did. Come up with twenty different examples, probably more than we did. Because there'll be, there'll be.
Either that, or by the time they get to thirty eight, thirty nine.
Nobody's there.
It'll only be the people on the stage still there, and he'll, he won't be reading it.
Say, our job is to approve and disapprove.
No, to make a recommendation.
Yeah, I'll make a recommendation, as written.
I'll move to accept a vote to approve as written. Second. Recommend as written, and let the rest of it fall where it falls. I think there's enough other regulations that are gonna govern what it.
Let's just hope everyone will think like we do, but I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Kenahan, how do you go?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Nay.
Aye.
Uh, I'm good about aye.
I mean, it's it's a catch twenty-two situation.
I was aye, three, four, one, nay.
It's one of those things damned if you do, damned if you don't.
I just look at, I mean, if we can pick it apart.
Yeah, we can educate.
Even a lawyer can do, you know, even a lawyer can pick it apart, then. And I just got a feeling that somebody's gonna come up with something, and we'll be looking at it going like, oh, why would we do that?
Yeah. That unfortunately, that happens with almost every better zoning we've got in town. You look at it.
Yeah, but this one's kind of obvious. It doesn't, there's no maximum to it, you know?
I mean, we talked about Howard Farms, and we talked about Glad Acres, both will. Howard Farms not as much as Glad Acres. Glad Acres has had septic problems from the day they opened the place. So if you took the second floor, and we're gonna put four units up there with bedrooms and stuff, you're talking, what, what is it, like a thousand gallons, fifteen hundred gallons per unit or something?
When they redid their system, I'd have to ask Rob, but it might be oversized.
But it's.
And it works.
That's like the third or fourth system. I mean, originally, it started with an immediately behind the building, then they built that thing where they, out in the back.
Yeah, and that failed.
Yeah, and that's been built at least twice that I remember. I just, I don't know.
With, I guess that's what it'll be, so, okay. Moving on, Article forty. Okay, this is for to allow accessory dwelling units. There will be allowed, and.
This means you got a, you got a house, and you wanna put a kitchen and a bedroom independent for your mother to live.
It's basically a mother-in-law apartment. And one of the things with this, it goes on to, it's like periods that you you to, you've gotta live in it. You can't, because it has nine hundred, not to exceed nine hundred square feet, but one of the things that I liked about it is that you have to get a notarized, town of West Bridgewater, accessory accessory dwelling unit affidavit, David, and it has to be registered, I record, excuse me, recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and I believe it's a yearly, yearly, it has to be updated. So whereas a lot of these in-law apartments came came along and when the two of the deed no longer existed, people were renting them out. So we got a bunch of these little duplexes around. This is.
But this still doesn't stop, this still doesn't stop you from putting an extra bedroom on your house.
No, it doesn't, you know, you can put all bedrooms you want on your house, but but this allows you to put a kitchen and.
It's gonna be self-contained.
Self-contained.
But the self-contained, does that mean kitchen, bathrooms?
Yeah. And and this has in it, it's a couple of pages, but it has, it has to be accessible indoors. It has to be an inside door that you can go from the main dwelling into the into the.
I know in East Bridgewater, when my sister converted the single-family ranch, one-story ranch, she made it a, and added a room for my mother at the end of it. The the building inspector in East Bridgewater, who I have a lot of respect, Bob Lundberg, he says, "The difference between what you wanna do and don't wanna do is, do you have a door between the two places?" That's what determined whether it's independent, and that is East Bridgewater's right.
And well, this is right in here.
I mean, if you have an open hall that doesn't have a door.
No.
Isn't it considered a single family with two bedrooms, two kitchens?
Tracy, if you can find the which section has a drawer in it.
Yep, so right in the definition of accessory dwelling unit, above the chart, there's a portion that says, "Shows a permanent opening through a common wall that is substantially contained within a dwelling."
Yeah, okay. Through a common wall.
Yeah, that makes a difference, common wall.
Yeah.
So you can't just build.
It won't be too.
Can't convert the garage. It's gotta be, it's gotta have a common wall. The wall has to have a door.
And the, it isn't a lifetime thing. You've gotta, you gotta keep, keep this up. You gotta, you gotta find somebody else that, either, a lot of times, it may be for the caretaker. You know, somebody could be taking care of their realize, and then as they get older, they need a caretaker, so they could, they could have it for a caretaker.
And in speaking with Mike, the intention of that affidavit is to include a provision saying that they will adhere to this section of the zoning law.
Right, yeah.
Where did we steal this one from?
I think, I think it's W. Town, I'm trying to remember which one.
I'm looking at six point two point four point two. I don't see no fraternities, sororities, or more than four occupants.
Yeah, that's East Bridgewater.
Actually, our.
Where do we get that from?
I think that's in our definition of family. I think it's it's in part, part of that, I don't think they get it.
Really? I mean, they could have just said, like, no more than four occupants and called it a day.
I think it was to clarify that.
Well, maybe, because because Mike was well aware of fraternities in Bridgewater.
In Bridgewater, that's good money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
If you, if you're a landlord and you get six people at a hundred and fifty bucks a month.
It just struck me as weird.
Yeah, I.
I mean.
In our, in our current definition of family, it references not including sororities and fraternities. So I think that's where that made it come from.
Is this an addition to an existing house or converting of an existing?
Existing homes has to have a common wall.
It does say something about addition.
It says incorporated within or attached to a dwelling, the single-family dwelling.
Well, that should, sounds like a pretty.
Because you have an existing building, and you're not expanding any walls, you don't tell them.
And in fact, it's something in here about the the doors. It can't have two, two main doors in front of the house, because this accessory building is just a little part of it. So you, you know, there's something in here about the aesthetics, changing the the view of it. I read through all of this today, but I can't remember exactly where it is. I know it's in there, but I can't, but it's. There, it's under six two four ten A. So the appearance of a single-family dwelling remains as a single-family residence. In general, any new entrances shall be located on the side or rear of the single-family. Any exterior change must conform with the single-family character of a principal single-family dwelling. Where two or more entrances exist on the front facade of a single-family dwelling, one entrance shall appear to be principal and the other appear to be secondary. So they don't, they don't, they don't even want it to look like a duplex.
Because I know a number of houses that, the house is here, the garage is here, or on the other end, and they built an addition that equalizes the size of the garage on the opposite end.
I can think of one in this town.
There's two or three of them up off of the farm.
Yeah.
And there's a couple on Pearl Road. One on Pearl Road, though, was initially built as a, as a in-law setup.
Okay.
It's, in fact, it's the guy who cooks for Al.
Don't be too specific.
But it's, he's with the Council of the Angels.
Okay.
I mean, it's perfectly legal. It was, the house was built that way.
Yeah. Okay.
I have no problem with it. If you can make a space for somebody to live and give them a home, because they can't afford a brand, you know?
And it's got some.
And they need help.
Regulations here, rather than just, you know, closing the garage door and putting a bed out there for them. At least, at least it's, it's covered. So are we?
It's covered, the bed.
Now, this is the the structure. Are we ready to move on?
I'll move to accept as presented.
Second.
Any any further discussion? Mr. Kenahan?
I go aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye, unanimous of the of the four. Article forty-one, okay, is to clarify the water resource protection overlay zoning district. We we had had a procedure that was endorsed by John Lee, former town council, and everything went very well until a very smart attorney from Brockton put together an opinion, and our town council concurred with him. And so what it would be, would somebody doing something, if they were in, say, the business zone, they wanted to do something there, they'd have to go to the zoning board. If it was also in the overlay district, the water resource district, they would have to come separately to us. So what this is basically doing is coming back and clarifying, re- re-endorsing Mr. Lee's original thing where it should be handled by by one entity, one, one, one board. And so they have decided to have the Water Resource Protection District be administered by the planning board, and in the process of doing it, we would take care of all the the other things, so it'd be just one board hearing it.
Motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kenahan?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye. Okay. And the last one, number forty-two, to see if the town will change section four, excuse me, section five point two point one, single-family and two-family dwelling minimum lot sizes as follows. And they will want to change, the existing single-family house lot is thirty thousand square feet. They're proposing to make it forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty, which is one acre. And for a two-family, a duplex lot, the existing minimum lot size is sixty thousand square feet. They are proposing it being changed to seventy-five thousand square feet.
I'll move not to.
Well, no, let's, let's, let's talk a little bit.
Well, the problem is, I have no problem with increasing the square footage. In fact, I proposed it years ago to increase the lot size from thirty thousand to an acre. But the problem is, it's not just changing the number, you're gonna change a whole lot of things that are associated with it.
Aye. I am not in favor of it, in fact, any of it. The thirty thousand square feet is is.
Actually, good size.
Adequate size to have it. Most of these people are having to hire, most, I'm one of the few, I think, that still mow my own lawn. It's, you'll you'll look around, we, there's lawn lawn service companies there all over the place. They're everywhere, and so it's gonna be a bigger one there. As far as the the two-family, it's the same thing there. But one of the things that I've always been concerned with, it's the law of physics for reaction, there's an equal and opposite reaction. And people, rather than saying, okay, like we say with the duplex, rather than trying to find seventy-five thousand square feet to to put it on, I wanna have a house, and I wanna have a have a rental unit, why don't I just go to a forty B? They've already demonstrated that you can put twenty-four units on thirty-one thousand square feet and cliche it. So with that in mind, you could put twenty-four, you could put about sixty units on on that seventy-five thousand square feet. And if if somebody wants to get a little income, maybe they'd like to get a lot of income. And and in fact, if he did get that approval, he could just sell the land for more than he he would ever get out of his duplex. So you're you're almost encouraging people to go the the.
I mentioned this before, but several years ago, Millarboro went to two acres, and because they thought the town was going too fast, they decided they needed a minimum two acres built. And all of a sudden, they built up like crazy, from that point on.
But. And and, oh, yeah, the snob zoning. In fact, forty B is, when you you look at it, it is called the anti-snob zoning. That's why it came up. That's why it came out. Back in the sixties, there was a move about to increase some of these lots, because these little towns felt they were getting built up too quickly. And that was one of the things, that was, that was one of the reactions then. That's how we got forty-B, was, was because they were trying to, they were trying to be snob, you know? I got my, my piece of the, of, of, how many, I got my nice house lot, I don't want anybody else to hear, but if they do come, they're going to have to pay for more land, more, more, bigger. And we were almost encouraging our town, rather than being a place where you can have a house lot and you could, and a, I'm not going to say normal, but somebody making a reasonable amount of, of income can buy it. I know the price of houses is going crazy, but you can, you can have it, you can have a single, you can have a single-family house. Not everybody wants to live in a, in a multi-family house. A lot of people don't want to live three stories up in heaven and listen to their neighbors either above them or below them. They want, they want this. Thirty thousand is a reasonable number. When we did put the two-family in, we wanted to be able to allow it, but we didn't want it to be too easy. We wanted, you know, we wanted to keep it within reason, but we wanted them to be able to have the two-family, because if somebody wanted, some people like to have a house that they live in and they rent the other side, it helps them pay for it. So they could, they could do something like that. That was the intent back in the nineties when we re-certified the, the, well, I think this is, it's just a bad idea to do it, and I think that the consequence, oh, and it's another thing, too. A lot of these lots, if you're talking a new subdivision, for one matter or the other, you, you can only get a road in so many lots in here. And so the thirty thousand square foot is two hundred feet wide, and if you've got a fifty-foot road, there's four hundred and fifty feet. So if you have a piece of land that is six hundred feet wide, you don't have room for two roads in there. So all that extra land, so, you know, they can, in instances like that, they can get it. And it was, the way it was presented to us, they wanted to do, do this to slow down on the number of new houses, because the schools were, were running out of space, because, so they were trying, the reason this was, it was told to me, they were doing it as a way of slowing down the number of new students at school. I think between some of the other things, like Mr. Kenahan said, this could encourage more, more forty-B type thing. We could get a lot more students than we would, building the conventional house on a thirty thousand square foot lot, having the one point two children per family, I'm not sure what the number is, every time they publish it, it's something, something different. And he, and somebody has a sized lot that he can, he can manage, but if you make it so it's only somebody that's very rich, well, they can afford to have the lawn care people come in, but the, you know, we're, we're a town of, we're of medium income. We're not a, we're not a rich town, we're not a poor town. We're, we're in the middle. And this is, is snob zoning, and it's apt to bring on the ramifications of snob zoning brought forth. And that's going to be my argument at the town meeting. So if anybody out there is listening to it, I'll polish it up a little bit, but I'm going to be at town meeting this thing. Now, does anybody else have anything?
I just think this town, we're governed by West Meadow Swamp, the Hockamark Swamp. It's the nature of the land that's going to control what's built in this town. It's not going to be the size of a lot. Especially now with the new water protection regulations, where they've got to, you know, downspouts have got to go into, they've got to have certain space for underground where the water's to flow. There's, there's regulations that are going to restrict the, you know, what you can build on pieces of property. Well-ins is going to have a lot to say and stuff, because we, we're running out of prime real estate in this town. I mean, I don't, you know, that's my thing, but I just don't think it's...
I do think, I mean, Hugh, you mentioned, you know, it's not, we're not kidding ourselves, West Bridgewater is not like the prime real estate market. You know, you take a conventional subdivision right now that you might be able to get ten units on, now you cut them down to seven, so either the developer's going to lose money on it, or he's going to charge, try to charge more per acre and not going to get that, and get frustrated and say, "I might as well put it in a forty-B now." You know, I've heard, you know, references, "Well, Dover can do it, and this, that, and everything else," but they're all, you know, you want to live in Dover if you had the money. You don't want to live in West Bridgewater if you had the money.
And if you buy a lot in Dover, it's five times the size of other lots.
Yeah, but it's just...
If Dover had their way, they'd have them all around it.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, to me, I would, you know, honestly, if somebody came up and said, "Okay, here's a market analysis, you know, here's, here's what," you know, a real estate developer, somebody who knows the numbers and says like, "Hey, you know what this is going to do, you know, are you going to be able to get another hundred thousand dollars per lot? So instead of two fifty now, the developer's got to charge three fifty a lot, and then with the house and everything else." I just, again, I don't think it's any different. I know they added in the two-family, because our argument a few weeks ago was, they didn't change that, but it's still, it doesn't change the underlying fact that I don't think that it's going to do what they want to do. And I'm going back to a few articles before, you know, they wanted to cut, you know, the number of dwelling units, or, but, you know, but now they want to put dwelling units in a business district, too, so, you really can't have both. But yeah, I still agree. I really do think the unintended consequences are going to force people, and we're not at, you know, again, if we are at our ten percent, this might not be a bad idea either. But we're not at a ten percent, so it becomes more, developers are going to look at it and say like, "I'm, you know, we can do the fortyBs."
We already know of a piece of land that they have no intentions of trying to do a conventional, just because they can, they can cut down their, their cost and get the density and get the value out of it. It hasn't officially come before us, but we have been tribute to different things being said and seen, so it is out there.
There's two pieces on my street.
Yeah.
One just went up for sale.
So, I'll entertain a motion to...
Not recommend.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kenahan?
No, me.
We're saying aye to not recommend, right?
No, we're saying, yes, we have no been asked. The motion is not to, so we're voting yes to not vote.
And I vote yes.
Yes to not.
And Mr. Hurley votes aye, unanimous to oppose the article. Well, with that being said, it's, we will put this to paper, and we will submit it to the annual town meeting via the moderator, and on Monday night at six o'clock, anybody that is interested in knowing how the Town of West Bridgewater runs is certainly invited to the, to the town meeting. As you can see, it's going to be interesting. It is not going to be just to rub a stamp on everything, so by all means, come and we'll take your, your chance to participate in democracy at its purest.
I'm with Neil.
Close the public hearing.
Mr. Stetson?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.